Now you have to sing.
One second, and we are live. Now called this regular meeting of Jacksonville City Council of Order. I want to thank all those who've come out for the meeting tonight and those watching G10 television. To begin the meeting, we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Logan Sosa, followed by the invocation by our city attorney. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we pause once again to acknowledge your presence and to give you thanks. Thanks for this beautiful day. Thanks for our city. Thanks for our friends and neighbors and our families. We pray for our nation and all of our fellow citizens as we enter this most strained election period. We pray that we can be builders of trust, that each of us can realize that we, none of us hold all the answers, that we're all on a journey most difficult, and that our only hope is to put our trust in you to give us guidance and direction. We pray for peace at home, in our nation, and around the world. And we pray for our military who are serving us here and around the world as they put their lives on the line for us. Protect them and protect their anxious families. And as always, give your guidance and direction to our mayor and to our council. We ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
Counsel, we have an agenda for tonight's meeting, a proposed agenda. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
We would ask on the closed session, would you add one other property? And that property would, that property would be 12 Tomlin Street for the council to consider.
Move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
As amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Brings us to our first section of public comment for this evening, and I have no one signed up, so we will go on to adoption of the minutes and the four consent items. The minutes are from the June 18th, 2024 regular meeting.
Move approval of the minutes and consent items.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Mayor, Pretend Bittner. And discussion. Hearing and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We'll move on down to item number five on your agenda. This is a system development fee analysis and fee of schedule amendment, and Wally Hanson will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Earlier, well, I guess last month, we talked about the system development fees, and we had a representative from Willdam Financial here to present our system development fee study and the fees that were calculated. Just as a reminder, the system development fees are a one-time payment that are paid at the time a connection is made to our water or sewer system. Example would that be somebody building a new home on a lot that has never been developed and tying into water and sewer. Well, that water and sewer was paid for initially by rate payers of the city to provide for that capacity, so they are essentially buying into that system. So the fee study that we have done or conducted was in accordance with general statutes. General statutes require that system development fee study be updated every five years and that it be prepared by a financial professional, which the city went out for RFP and hired Willdam Financial Consulting to provide that study. And then it also has two other requirements. The other requirements are a 45-day public comment period and a public hearing, which we will ask for you to conduct tonight. To get to this process, we actually added one additional step in. We did a stakeholder committee meeting for members of the development community where we brought those that we had worked with pretty frequently over the last five years or that had pending development. And we brought them in and presented the draft study and gave them a direct opportunity to comment. They were very pleased with the study, and there were, there were a few questions, but really minimal comment. We also presented the draft study to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, who did ask questions, provided comments, and made a recommendation. And I'll share that with you following the public hearing. And then at your June 24th, we had Daryl from Willdam Financial come in and present the findings of that study to you. And as part of that, we adhered to the 45-day public comment period. We advertised that. The study was available on our website. It was available in written format here at City Hall. I'll let you know that closed on June 20th. We did not have any comments from the public following that public comment period. So this is the basis of the study. I won't go back through it because I know you've seen it. Now, Mr. Logan's seen it at least twice, but I know that you had a nice, long brief from Mr. Parker at our workshop meeting. But you can see the two primary components that build our system development fee are our capital improvement plan, which we have roughly $70 million of recoverable capital programmed in our 10-year CIP or capital, sorry, improvement plan. And then we have roughly $178 million in recoverable facilities that the city has already invested in. So great examples of this would be our wastewater plant expansion that we did in 2012 and our water plant that we constructed in 2010. Both of those have capacity remaining. There were large expenditures. Those two projects were roughly $100 million. So those are those capital facilities that we are looking to recover. That all boils down to a cost per equivalent residential unit, or ERU. And what you can see here is our existing cost for residential unit and then the calculated. And what I'll point out is really that difference is $5, which is the same as what Mr. Parker had talked to you about at your June 4th workshop. And I have a feeling that that nominal difference is probably the reason we haven't had a lot of comment or a lot of comment from the development community. Many times when other entities do these kind of studies, the change is fairly drastic. We have seen that in the past, but I think that goes to our capital improvement plan that we reevaluate every year, the water and sewer rate model that we use in setting our fees, and then keeping our system development fees current. So this is the calculated system development fees by meter size. The proposed fee schedule amendment that we would propose be effective August 1st that's attached in your agenda is actually built off of these fees that were calculated. And again, you'll see that 5/8 meter, which is that equivalent residential unit, is, will now be $6,170. And then here is a comparison to our proposed fee along with our current fee. You can see those two are in red and green side by side. And you'll see that we kind of fall right in the middle of those that we compared to. What I will say is, you know, while this is a great comparison, just remember that the fee is calculated based off of our system and our cost, and their fees are calculated based off of their relevant systems and their cost. So you can see that the 6170 for both water and sewer for per ERU is what, where the fee study calculated the fee is supportable, and that's what we would recommend you consider. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for the public hearing.
Thank you, Wally. At this time, we'll resume the regular council meeting and open up the public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this rate or the system development fee analysis? So you know, one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, you're being asked to approve the system development fee study and adopt the water and sewer fee schedules included.
So moved.
Second.
Now, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Wally. Go down to item number six, and this is our nonprofit grant funding for FY '25. Pam Trafton will be presenting this item. Pam.
Good evening, the mayor and council. How are you doing?
Great, how you doing?
So coming back before you, as it is now time to prepare to fund our nonprofits, the purpose of tonight is to identify the nonprofit organizations that provide services in a cost-effective manner that might otherwise require the city to provide. And just some background history, we start our nonprofit funding schedule in November 2023 for this year. And the purpose of starting the schedule is to allow those organizations that are interested in applying for funding this year to go through the Funding Opportunity Workshop, submit an application. And from that application, our review committee looks at those applications and provide recommended funding. And so a few slides that you'll see before. Our Community Development Block Grant Funds, again, it's a program that's administered through HUD. So when reviewing those applications, we're making sure that they're looking at the low to moderate income persons or an area, slum and blight removal, or addressing an urgent need, but also still identifying HUD's goals as well strategically for underserved communities, access and increase to affordable housing, promoting homeownership in sustainable communities. And the great thing about these goals is we also look at it when we're thinking about our general funds as well. Again, identify those needs that if a nonprofit organization did not do it, the city would have to take that responsibility. And so with the 24, 25 priority needs, we have homelessness, suitable living environment, special housing needs. Our suitable living environment identifying the special populations. Again, affordable housing and public services. As we look at the applications that were submitted and upon the budget approval, we have $77,000 that was approved for general funds and $50,000 from community development block grant funds for a total of 127,000. But as you can see underneath, we had a request of 628,000 from the applications we did receive. This year, we're able to fund with your approval two capital projects using community development block grant funding. The first one is with Carolina Statewide Development. They are doing a construction project for 72-unit apartments focusing on low income. And the second one, East Carolina Community Development, is looking at 12 transitional homes supporting the homelessness. So these are two that will be utilizing community development block grant funds. Our public services that we focus gives you a history of how we have funded in the past, what they requested this year, and what our recommendation. As we saw on the previous slide, we have $50,000 to spend. So out of the 50,000, Onzeal Community Outreach, our homeless shelter, still recommend $20,000 to continue to fund. Onzeal's Women's Center, 15,000. Philippians Place, 10,000. And Williams Outreach and Consultant, 5,000. And all four of these assist us with our homeless populations, whether it's through shelter, whether it's through direct services, peer support, specialists. But these four organizations do help us address homelessness. So specifically with our nonprofit CDBG, in fiscal year '24, we funded at 45,000. The request this year, including a capital improvement, is 503,000, and we recommend 430,000. With general fund services, we have budget amount of 77,000. Those that applied, we have Pre-Child Resource Center at $10,000 recommended. Onzeal County Peers, they did apply, however, early in the year. We know that Peers is no longer in operation, so we removed the recommendation for funding there. United Way to continue to do their volunteer center at 5,000. Wilmington Area Rebuilding Ministry, we were able to fund last year, recommend 10,000 again this year as they are helping us with Clean and Green, helping those that are looking to have rehab homes that we are not able to assist. Warm is able to do that for us. And then Boys and Girls Club of Southeastern at $30,000. In '24, we were funded at 85,000. We had a request of 125,000 with recommended from our committee at 55,000. And our recommendation is to approve what has been recommended before you.
Pam, tell us about your committee, your review committee.
Our committee? So our advisory committee is those that review the application. We are probably about seven of us that are total on the review committee. And that includes myself and Tracy as well to give directions.
Is it just city staff, or is that people from, you know, the public as well?
Our public Neighborhood Improvement Services Advisory Committee, our NISAC.
Okay, right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So how do they come up with certain amounts for certain organizations? I mean, how does all that happen? Just when you go through the application process?
Yes, sir. So we take the application, and then we look at the budget that we have and look at how we're able to spread the wealth that we do have, taking into consideration that what we're giving them is just a tip of the iceberg to be able to help provide some services.
So I guess the, to fill the gap between what they're asking for and what they're getting, I guess they'd have to get private funding or other funding from other sources, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir. And in their application, they do submit where else they are receiving funds from because we know that our funding is not going to 100% serve what's needed. But the main question that's asked within the application is, if CDBG was to be completely taken away, is this program still able to operate? So we understand when reviewing that it's just an extra leverage to it.
I know in the two housing programs, projects there, those are, got a general, a specific purpose for the money. Does the nonprofits have to come up with a model program? Or do they have, are we just supplying money for operation?
No, they have to let us know exactly what it's going for. And then out of their requests, we specify within the contract as well what we're willing to fund because we want to make sure that services that can be provided are provided. Again, knowing that this is just a tip of the iceberg and that if we can still take care of some within the community, then we're doing our part.
Good.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray, you have something to add?
Mayor, you did have an email earlier today from Dr. Washington since she wasn't going to be able to attend the meeting. She sent some questions that we wanted to follow up on. Tracy actually gave us, gave us a response, so we're going to send that back out tomorrow to council. But this topic on community support funding, if you look at Ms. Trafton's list of the dollars that we have and the requests that come in, this is going to be on the post-budget retreat agenda for council. So it's a bigger issue. What you're going to see from Ms. Trafton is the need in the community is great. So council is going to be challenged with, how do you move forward? You upped the game in FY '25. How do you move forward for '26 and so forth to partner with not only our tried and true partners that we have now, but others that are trying to develop a program that may help some of our citizens moving forward? So part of that dialogue on our August post-retreat meeting will address some of those questions that Dr. Washington submitted. And so I think this, what Ms. Trafton supported tonight is simply exactly that. The tip of the conversation as you continue to face the challenges to see how we can step up to be even greater with our community support. So I just encourage you, when we send that out, check back to those answers that Ms. Jackson sent us that we'll get out to you tomorrow, and then we'll prep for that meeting in three or four weeks.
Some of the committees I sit on, I work with a lot of these nonprofits, and we couldn't handle what they do. But they can use as much support as we can give them. So sometimes it takes going into these organizations and asking them what they do so you could get a better understanding of how they help our community. But we definitely appreciate all of what you guys do for us in the community.
Definitely.
So, recommendation?
If you want a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
We're going to have a public hearing first, right?
No, sir.
Oh, you're not requiring one for this? Okay. Wait a minute, just a minute. I just lost my page here. All right. Any other questions of Ms. Trafton? Good job. Thank you for your report. At this time, you're being asked to review and consider the recommendations from the committee. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Further discussion? Hearing and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to, we're going to do a little bypassing here. We're going to do our reports real quick, and we're going to do our one-city. And then we'll move to A and B for our discussion on recreation land use. So I'll start with you, Mr. Jackson.
Stay cool. So I'm happy it's hot. They can stay hotter longer. It smells like money.
Yep, that's all I had to say. Yeah, yeah, that's my wife's doing, by the way.
I figured that. Mayor, Tim, Pretend.
No report.
I'll just, I wanted to give out congratulations. On the 21st of this month, Onzeal Memorial Hospital is celebrating their 80th anniversary with an event, but we just want to say kudos to 80 years of serving our community. Local hospitals have had a hard time in the last decade in particular, so we're proud that they're still here and still serving our community. And congratulations to OMH. And then on the 27th, there is a Summer Latin Fiesta happening with Ola, the Onzeal Hispanic and Latin Association. And then, of course, our Public Safety has a National Night Out, August 6th. Stay cool.
That may be a short stay.
Highly recommended, sir.
Me and Mr. Bittner would back that.
I had opportunity yesterday to sit down with the assessors from the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. You know, Jacksonville Police Department's been an accredited police department. And we were early on in the process. Back in 1991, our, our police department was, met the standards for national accreditation. We were the 161st agency in the nation and the ninth in North Carolina to become accredited. Mr. Bittner had a lot to do with pushing that, that, to, one. You were the manager at the time we started that process. And I believe you, you brought that back to our department. And I had the, I had the privilege of working on that project for four years, starting in 1987. We finally were conferred in 1991. And ever since then, the department has continued to expand and expound on that program. When I was talking to the assessors yesterday, well, one thing I made sure that they understood was that we are proud of our police department, what, what we have been able to accomplish, what our chief has been able to do during the time he's been here, and how we stack it up so much better than a lot of these other agencies as far as how we deal with our citizens on a day-to-day basis. And we are very proactive. Our, our police department is very proactive in creating that good public relations. And I just wanted to bring that up because it's very important. It's, it's a very prestigious recognition for our, for our police department.
Well said.
Mr. Ray.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Apologize, my papers are a little wet. Mr. Carter poured water on my papers to see if it was going to be tricky. But that won't slow us down. Some people you just got to work through. Thanks for the opportunity, Mayor. I think that's, your lead-in is great because not only is accreditation part of our police department, our city organization, but it's our community efforts. And part of the, part of the conversation there was about how our community partners are so strong. So as we start out our one-city moment, we're going to start with the New River Institutes, celebrating 25 years this year of success. And I say success because the program is an engagement program where we're trying to interact with our, with our youth and with our community to, to celebrate things that we're doing, to look at different trades, to look at different areas of focus. But right here, you see, there's Pat in the center and part of her team talking about 25 years. And happy people with cake. If, if there's anything that shows you a good, strong community, it's, it's the focal point that not only do you start a strong program, just like you alluded to with our accreditation, Mayor, but you maintain that program. And that means it has to have community support and it has to have those partners. Sturgeon City's been an amazing partner for the city. As we've said previously, next year will be Sturgeon City's 25th anniversary. But the New River Institutes, which we talked about last year, and we schedule year in and year out, they come every year, and we grow accustomed to that, but it's not by any small feat. It takes a very dedicated effort by, by the team and by the community to continue to step up and make some real success stories out of it. Right here, you're going to see part of our students from this year's institutes. We have four different institutes, science, art and media, public safety and leadership. If you recall from our previous discussions, seeing these classes set out for our students during the summer is a huge part of our summer engagement efforts. All too often, we look at, how do we keep kids active? How do we keep them engaged? Not only do we have New River Institutes, the Sturgeon City has their summer program. Boys and Girls Club has their summer program. Our Recreation has their summer program. The YMCA has their summer program. And I would argue that that's still not enough. So as we go back through to the concept of discussing how we become more active with our partners, here's that challenge is we, we just got to bring the partners together. It's just like this. The slides are moving without me touching the thing, so I don't even know what's happening. It's, they're trying to keep me paced here. But what you're seeing is, you're seeing individuals from each of these different focal points engaging these students. These, the classes sold, well, I'd say theoretically sold out. They filled up as soon as we launched them. And we could interact and involve more students. We just have to have more time. We just have to have more opportunity. We already use our local educators to keep this program moving. We bring them in every year. And you can see, this engagement right here is not what my kids are going to get if they stay at our house. They don't get this depth, this interaction, this experience that, that a lot of kids aren't going to get because we just don't actively push kids in this direction. You know, that summer programming is something that's very important to growth and development as we look at all the issues. So very exciting to see interaction here, some of the programming you can see. And if you have any other questions on how the New River Institutes work, I encourage you to take the time to sit down with Pat, sit down with Lisa, talk to them about the programs now, where we've been and where we're headed. For those of you that were able to go to that celebration, you got to hear about it. But if you're missing out on anything and you want to know more, let's take a field trip. Let's go down and see classes in action and listen to the teachers who are coming over. Some of these teachers are coming back year after year to be a part of that engagement, not because they're bored, but because they're actively engaged with educating our youth. This other thing that I have up here is fishing with the fuzz. Very exciting. This is the first year, this is a partnership between our law enforcement, middle school, and Jacksonville Stormwater. Word on the street is, as you'll notice in this picture, no fish were harmed or even bothered during this full-day event. And so, I mean, it's the craziest thing ever. Nothing was, the environment's safe. Every sturgeon, every flounder, every trout, crab, they're all still in their same habitat. But the interaction here is, you don't just see our police officers, you see community members, and you see, you see our youth engaging together. And that just falls in line with the value that we have to connect people with support, community. We talk all the time about social We talk all the time about social issues and how we're gonna attack certain issues. Well, here's the answer. We create relationships within the community with multiple members and multiple partners to our way of being successful. Hopefully, this one day will provide our youth with an opportunity to see our police department operate in a different atmosphere. You know, something that's positive, engaging, the community-oriented policing that's been going on since 1980. This is a value add. There's only one fishing pole for the whole group, so it shows you that, you know, it's a real aggressive group. We may need a little work next year to figure out what the purpose is, but I think it was really just a social gathering. Maybe there were hot dogs. Great job to Chief and his team, and to Pat and her team for bringing it all together. Wait a second, somebody slid a slide in. This is an old picture. This is a fish from a couple of years ago. Don't know what's going on here. It's happy times, right? It's very successful in engagement right there. And the last item I wanted to present, Mayor, is we took this group right here, we took them on a tour, we gathered some friends, and we decided, hey, does anybody wanna go on a trip? And we talked internally, there was a few people for the city that said, shoot, I'd like to go on a trip for a couple of days. Where are we going? We said we're going to Denver. We said there's this competition, the All-America City. You know, we didn't have to go and compete because Jacksonville is an All-America City. Again, back to Mr. Bittner's leadership, we are, we wear that badge of honor everywhere we go, every single day, and there's a value there. But what we did is, we pulled together this fantastic-looking group of people that wanted to put on something to represent our community and make the trip and represent Jacksonville. So I'm gonna roll some footage real quick and show you something, and then I'll say some other words in a second.
We are Jacksonville!
This is our city.
This is our city.
Its unique blend of patriotism, community spirit, and natural coastal beauty make it a truly special place to call home. This is my city.
My family has chosen to retire and settle in as citizens of Jacksonville. This is my city.
We just wanted to let you know that the experience over in Denver was a fulfilling one. We had a chance to represent Jacksonville and all the wonderful programs that we've had.
We learned a lot from our neighbors all over America. Little tiny towns of 3,000 all the way up to huge cities of 200,000. It's been a great experience.
So I'll tell you, as I finish with this group here, I just wanna be able to attribute some of this success before I tell another story. I did bring along some friends that like to wear blue with us tonight. We brought some people that don't wanna wear blue because they don't wanna be part of our group. I really thought I could count on Grover to wear the shirt, but apparently...
Before you go further, have your group stand up.
I'm gonna have them stand up, so we have Raquel, we have Crystal, we have JoJo, we have Kelsey, TJ, Susan, Dawn, Quentin One, Grover Lewis III, Brad, Ruth, Taylor, Chris Jones, Q2, Kinsley, Kaylee, Hadley, and then a player to be named later that you saw in the front of the picture, Staff Sergeant Nasty and Canai, who we picked up at about 4 o'clock on the day of arrival in Denver, Colorado. And the man showed up looking as dapper as what you see there. And the flip side of that one is, Susan committed to the, well, just committed, that's enough to say. She stepped up, she got the call at about 8:30-ish?
8:30 PM.
Yeah, Ruth and I had an idea, and she'd been planting the seed. So 8:30, the day before we met at 3:30 in the AM to leave, we needed somebody. And we made the call, actually, I just sent a text, 'cause who calls? I sent a text, and she called back immediately and said, "Sounds crazy, but why not? I'd love to do this and be a part of this group." And so, Mayor, this is part of our All-America City team, and they're amazing.
Great job.
I tell you, the best part, Mayor, is it's, I didn't understand before going because I've never participated before. Mr. Bittner's participated, Mr. Massey's participated before, none of us had participated. And the process for us was incredible, because I thought that it was about being there and really just presenting who you are as a community. I think what we learned is, who we are as a community is incredibly strong. It's incredibly powerful. You know, we started out with the concept of, we will focus on the One City Initiative. We actually finished, Mayor, with your quote. That was it. Then we hit every issue that we tackle as the community of Jacksonville. We brought in all of our partners. These partners are sitting here with us, and everybody had their story, whether it was a my-city story, or it's an our-city story. And just like you saw a few of those examples, it's really flipping strong. It's, we solve issues, other communities focused on one issue. And it was impressive. It was good to see 20 communities talk about their civic pride. Our civic pride is so strong because we know how to address issues. Some are more challenging than others, but when we stood on the stage, I know as a community, we oozed with pride, and everybody understood, that's where we're at. And so for the trip, it was great. I think JoJo had a fantastic time. He was always in every picture. We had to weed him out of half the pictures because he was so active. Quentin came back today from being back home after completing his internship, just to be here tonight, because this group that could be here tonight, very thankful of the opportunity to represent our community. And I tell you, in terms of how talented and deep and diverse we are, we took the best team out of every city. We were so happy to be there with High Point. High Point was selected as an All-America City this year, and that was awesome. So our team, in terms of age, in terms of gender, in terms of who lives in our community, we were there, and we were there Jacksonville-strong. So I say it again, thank you to each of you for being incredible, thank you for representing, and unfortunately, thank you for challenging us to do more, right? Because that's the beauty of it, Mayor, is that the community, we could take so many people that can tell their story, and it'd be a value add. These guys are top-notch, and other than Grover wanting to wear his blue shirt. I'm gonna get you another one, Grover. But these are also the people that we call upon to step up in the community, to help serve us out. So when Ms. Trafton's talking about community partners, these are community partners, and they're trying to do more because that's just what we do. So thank you for the opportunity, and thank you to you guys.
Y'all represented us very well, very well, excellently. And we know we're an All-American city, if there ever was one, okay? Don't y'all agree?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. All right, so with this, we'll go, Mr. Carter, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go to A and B and discuss the recreation project.
I listened.
Okay, all right, we're back live again. We'll go ahead and resume with item number seven for discussion. This is on Recreation and Parks Complex Design.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here to give you an update on where we are with the project. It's been a couple of months, and I wanted to provide an update on what we've been doing behind the scenes, where we are, and of course, where we'd like to move in the future, because the directive that I've been given is, is that we need to get this done. So, some recent accomplishments. As you recall, Council accepted the site master plan that was developed by McAdams. Of course, that included a ton of public involvement, probably more public involvement than we've done since I've worked for the city. And I think that is reflective of the results. Also, approval of the Recreation and Parks Master Plan, where Susan and Michael took the lead on that. That gave us more than the 400 acres, that gave us a broader understanding of what we wanna do long-term throughout the community. And of course, both of those two projects are related, and they represent the majority of the contract that we had with McAdams for what we call Phase 1. Some other good news is, we've worked with probably four or five private developers on their interest for the multifamily component of the project. And we talked about how public and private investment is going to be needed in order to make this thing happen. And several have reached out to us, some of them local, some of them not, but the concept seems to have legs. And it's something that we're gonna be talking to Council about, hopefully, in the next few months, as some of those plans become a little bit clearer. And then, we also leaned forward on the traffic impact analysis. Of course, traffic is always a concern, but the challenge that we faced there is that we had to do some work with DOT up front to scope the analysis and get the traffic counts while school was still in session. So that's one of their minimum requirements. We've already leaned forward on that. Where we'd like to go is Phase 2 of the project with McAdams. They did such a great job on Phase 1, and of course, the bidding process that we had with them included a variety of different types of services, so we would like to continue to work with them on Phase 2. Now, I'm not gonna go through each one of these here, but I think the main thing to take away from this list and the project scope is that we're moving from more of a planning exercise into design, okay? That's the next logical step. And that, of course, gets us closer to execution. So we're gonna touch on each one of these, and if you have questions, please let me know. I'm not gonna go into too much detail, but I want you to understand what it is we're hoping to do and why. Survey and geotechnical is required. This is something that we deferred from Phase 1, because initially in Phase 1, the recommendation from the contractor was to survey the entire site and to do geotechnical boring for the entire site. Well, that had a monster cost. And what we said was, we agree that this needs to be done, let's do the master plan first, so we know exactly where we need to do that work, instead of doing it kind of, you know, whole hog for the entire site. We were also able to work with McAdams to leverage a subcontractor who did work for the prior owner, so particularly survey work. That has already been paid for, and of course, we bought the land, so we want to be able to use that survey work that's already been paid for. We don't wanna re-incur that cost. And we also want to exclude private development areas. And talking with some of those private developers, and in our experience with Project Frontier, what we found is, is that we can go out and collect all the data that we want, you know, which makes a lot of sense for our decision-making purposes. But when it comes to theirs, regardless of what we have, they're going to recollect it. So the question that we have is, why would we do that? Okay? And so you'll see that kind of as a reoccurring theme throughout the rest of this presentation. But just to give you an idea of where we're gonna focus our survey and geotechnical efforts, the yellow area that's kinda outlined in white, that's an area that we're going to survey in detail, LiDAR, topo, because that's where we really wanna focus our construction activity. Of course, the red dash line is the main road that comes into the site, we'll collect some data there, too. But we'll also probably end up sharing some of that work with the private development, because if you see where it says townhomes there on the right-hand side of the drawing, that road is gonna, is going to pass through private development. And one thing that we've heard from the folks thus far is, they would like to have some input on where the road is. So we may spend more time on the pieces that are kinda outside that townhome development, and then work with a developer in the future on defining A to B inside the development. So the yellow circles are where we do geotechnical boring and get the soil analysis done. And you can see that down there on the bottom where it says Adventure Park, there's a couple of, there are a couple of samples, and really, this is based on them renting a machine for a couple of days and how many samples they can take in that time. Again, notice that where the main street area is and the townhomes are, we're not recommending any data collection there. So moving forward, planning and engineering, you know, we've done a good amount of planning to this point, but this is where we take it to a much higher level of detail, to where we make sure that the plans that we've assembled can comply with our rules. Because of course, we have to comply with UDO and other rules that would apply to this development. So landscaping plans, utility plan, which is gonna be very important, stormwater, but then also with that, get detailed construction estimates. And that's gonna be a reoccurring theme here, too, because to date, we've gotten some estimates, and we showed you what those were when we looked at the master plan. But those are very high-level estimates. We're getting to a much greater level detail here, so that we can hone those in, and we can start doing some real budgeting and some real decision-making on things that we can live with, things that we have to have, and things that we may have to let go by the wayside. So when it comes to planning and engineering, the yellow area is where McAdams has said that they will work. And doesn't mean that they're going to plan every square inch of that area, but in particular, they're going to focus on the event, the sports and events center, as well as the playing fields, and some of the surrounding area, particularly the roadways and things of that nature. Same thing with engineering, you know, we're gonna have to get utilities to these locations, we're gonna have to have a better understanding of what the road needs to look like, all of that kinda stuff. So this is where we really get into the planning and permitting piece of it. And also, this is where we wanna take a little bit more unique of approach than we've done with the rest of the project. So we have to do a plan-unit development for this type of project to comply with UDO, okay? It's a mixture of zonings right now, primarily residential, and of course, we want to do residential and non-residential things. The plan-unit development gives us the flexibility that we're looking for in order to do all of this on one site. In this case, though, the city is going to take the lead on these efforts, okay? And then McAdams is going to be in a supporting role. The reason is, is these are our processes, these are our rules, you know, these are things that we can do ourselves, as long as we are given the tools and the documents that are necessary to navigate it. There's several parts to this. One is a technical review. It's already been through technical review once, but of course, we're gonna end up getting into more detail with this plan-unit development process. It does require a public meeting, so even though Mayor and Mr. Massey went out there and had some great conversations with the neighborhood, we're gonna have to go out there again as part of the plan-unit development process. It'd have to go through the Planning Advisory Board, then they would make a recommendation to City Council as to whether to approve it or not. So the decision rests with the Council, and the intent here is to create a master plan that Council can approve. plan that Council can approve, that gives us enough level of specificity to say, you know, the neighbors might be okay with it, this is kind of what we want to do and where, but it also leaves enough flexibility that we can come back to the planning staff with individual sections of it, say like the multifamily piece and whatnot, and that they can be approved at an administrative level.
And we take those projects through with these outside partners like Anthony's talking about. If we already have the approvals completed, then it's going to make it easier. You think about that shovel-ready concept where sites are ready, we say if they're stormwater-ready, the utilities are there, the zoning's ready, then these partners can come in and they're ready to get their project on the ground. The good thing about this process for us is as we lead Council through the PUD discussion, potentially, it opens us up for if other partners want to come in with their own PUD development, and it's, the best part about it is you're going to see the trade-off of what you may choose to do if, let's say, for example, you want a wider street on the downtown and you want more of a buffer on the residential, as we've talked before. Well, we can decide that in our proposal, that goes back through this full process, we put more of a buffer. The UDO may not even require that buffer, but you may say, let's do that because we want to protect the residential. What I think it does is it sets us up for that type of community response when other developers come in and say, we want to do something, well, look what we did with our land, and we do that because we always go through our official processes. So, I think we, not only we get an educational process as an organization, but we get an opportunity to build multiple projects within one master plan. So, we also made a friend in, in one of our projects, so we've got a Wilmington-based PUD attorney if we needed more support outside of everything else. So, you know, we've got all these people that can help us, but the end game is, we're going to get it right, you know? That's the process so that we have public confidence on the product we're putting, putting out there.
This would be the city's first proactive plan unit development. The only other time we've done this before is reactive for Holiday City in order to give them some flexibility and what they have out there and what they wanted to do. So, again, we're moving to a higher level of detail, and when we talk about schematic design, we're talking more about structures and facilities, okay? This is where it gets really exciting, because we are looking at the meeting and event space, so the building itself, whether it's 120,000 square feet or 150, we're really going to start making some decisions on what that is intended to do and what it's going to contain. Same thing with the fields, the tournament fields as well as the championship fields, that would be, that's included to the schematic design level. As far as all of these facilities go, we would start with essentially a brainstorming exercise based upon the master plan, but then also getting to a higher level of detail. It's what we call programming. But then, we'd also talk about construction techniques and materials that are going to impact not only how it looks, but how it functions and how much it costs. So, those are going to be some very important decisions along the way that help us calibrate where we want to land as far as cost goes, okay? That's what's really different about what we've done to this point versus where we are now. We're going to heavily focus on the details and the cost. Getting to 30% designs gets us a very high, well, let's just say, it gets us a more detailed understanding of the cost of all of those facilities, and then it sets us to a point where we can then choose to take off and go to 100% plans and then go to bid, or if we want to start to phase some of these things, say we want to do the fields first, or say we want to do the building first, you know, we can make those decisions at the 30% design because we're going to have a really good idea of what the cost, construction timeline, and all of that is going to be. So, again, here at the map, we're focusing on the rectangular fields as well as the sports and events facility.
What's the root of the sewer line?
Excuse me, sir?
The root of the sewer line?
Yes, sir. That's something that's definitely going to have to be considered.
Where is that root? Is that, is that radio?
Right now, it basically, oh, I have the, you see where it says 480 spaces right there over top of that building in the center?
Okay.
The existing lift station is shown there. Remember if this is a touchscreen or not. Anyways, where it says plus or minus 480 spaces, now we're just playing.
Let's just keep doing it.
Where it says plus or minus 480 spaces, just above that is a very small red dot, which is where the lift station is.
Okay.
Now, I'm sorry, go ahead. Wally has probably a much better answer than I do.
So, I think, are you asking about the new sewer that we're putting in?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. It is south of the site. It actually doesn't touch this site.
Okay.
That runs down Williamsburg Parkway.
That's correct.
But there is an existing sewer line on this site that will have to be taken into account.
Yes, but it's much smaller.
Much smaller, yep. Okay? So, one other thing that was identified, not only through our master planning exercise, but through public involvement, was that, you know, trails and outdoor facilities are in high demand. People really like those, and this site is a great opportunity for us to work on some of those things, particularly in areas where traditionally you would consider them undevelopable. So, flood zones, areas where we have the transmission lines, of course, you know, there's two of them out there. We don't want to just leave those to grow trees. We can use them for productive things as long as we plan for that upfront.
Speaking of the transmission lines, has there been any communication with DUC?
There's been limited communication with DUC about it, but I believe the intent is to do the traffic setting, figure out whether or not we're going to need some additional access to the site, and if we do, re-engage with them more. If we don't, then it's going to be a much simpler process of just saying, hey, we'd like to build some trails that cross our easements. That is in the cards for sure, though.
And we've set up a meeting with their new government rep in the next two weeks for all of our directors to sit down at one table. This will be one of the things that we talk to her about, just so she can start it in that circle, and then maybe she redirects us to another, to another angle so that we get to the right people for the discussion, should we go back for access, access points to there.
So, not only trails, but water access was identified by our surveys and our public involvement process is a very high priority. And of course, if you look at the site, that's one of the key amenities that came with this location, is that the New River runs right adjacent to it. It's actually the property line for the western side of the parcel, and if it's well-planned and executed, it could be a very valuable water access site. But again, the yellow area that you see is where we're going to spend most of our time on kind of that outdoor recreation planning, again, whether it's bicycle trails or hiking trails, or disc golf, or whatever Susan and Michael would like to come up with, you know? Making that productive area, I think, is very important for the long-term success.
What area's been used? Didn't they use that for, what was that competitive?
For Frogman?
Frogman.
We didn't get that deep into the site for Frogman, because that's actually kind of way back in there.
Okay.
But yes, I mean, in the future, maybe we have Frogman back there, because it will be much more accessible by road and by trail. Those are things that we need to consider, because that was a very successful event. Other tasks, so maybe these aren't as fun, but they're also very important to the long-term success here. We're going to develop a plan for how to manage the facility. That's one of the recommendations that was universal of all the sites that we visited. Start that planning early, figure out if you can bring on a management company early in the design process to help advise you, you know, because they're the experts, they're the ones that know all the tricks, what you need versus what you don't need, and again, that's feedback that we got from every single one. And then also, in the scope of work is to develop an RFQ, likely an RFP, to solicit interest in managing the facility long-term, because we feel that a private management company is probably going to be needed in order to make that happen. A funding plan, of course, why Sir Bryn is sitting back there is, we've got to figure out how to pay for it. She's got it all worked out, we're just going to plug it right in there, but, you know, there are a lot of factors that go into how do we pay for it, not only what the city can generate, but also what are the private interests going to generate? Can we do some naming rights, sales, things of that nature? How do we come up with, you know, the most dynamic way to pay for this thing? And then, like I said, the traffic impact analysis, McAdams is actually not going to run with that. We are going to do that as a city. We have a contractor that we've worked with for years, and they're being very kind on the scope of work for that, TIA. So, it will run concurrent with everything that's going on, but we will handle that outside the McAdams scope. So, this is where the sticker shop does come in, and one thing to keep in mind here is that we are getting to design. When you get to design, it becomes expensive because it becomes based upon a percentage of what the overall construction cost of a facility might be. The two numbers there that have asterisks, those are up-to numbers, those are not lump-sum fees. So, I mentioned to you with the plan unit development, they're only going to help us to the level that we ask them to. So, if we ask them for two hours of help, that's what they're going to do. If we ask them for 20 hours of help, that's what they're going to do. But I do not envision that we would expend anywhere close to that $19,000. Same thing with the TIA. The reason that that's kind of a pay-as-you-go type of approach is because we don't know exactly how much it's going to cost until we get in a little bit deeper with DOT, but I don't envision it costing $30,000. Now, $1.9 million is a lot of money for this next phase, but speaking with our Tourism Development Authority, the consensus was they want to remain partners, and of course, Mr. Jackson was part of that conversation, and they've actually committed to help support 50% of this cost if we all choose to move, to move forward with the scope of work. Please correct me if I'm not a turn. Any questions about the fee?
If you know any TDA board members and you're sitting next to one, I would encourage you to ask them for a little more if they happen to be in the room.
We do what we can.
The well does go dry, Mitch.
Well, I tell you, that whole point is, that's a partnership, and this is like we talked about earlier, these partnerships are the way we make these things happen. If you think about the original thought of TDA, the dialogue that I had a little over two years ago, the concept was, we have some dollars for construction, we want to be a partner in building this facility. Well, now, the numbers got real, and so the way that they can be a partner is to use their dollars towards this planning and the design, and I think that's an amazing partnership, and it leads right into that, that split in terms of how we're utilizing those funds to make that impact down the road. So, I say that joking, but without that partnership, it makes it more difficult for the Council, because then you're trying to take that lift based on your sales tax and your ad valorem tax, and this is a great use of those dollars that, once again, goes back to the foresight of creating an effective Tourism Development Authority.
Speaking of partnerships, are we getting the county on board to help?
We are not, but the good thing the county's doing right now is they just started their strategic planning process, the first one they've ever had, and so, they're going through, starting interviews last week with different partners throughout all of Onslow County to get input on their strategic plan. What I would encourage you to do is if you get to add this input, is to talk about the projects that we are doing as a city and then to encourage their participation. The fact that they're having a strategic plan is phenomenal. You know, Jones, Joe Ed is going through strategic planning process right now. That's fantastic. We just finished our Parks and Rec master plan. All these plans will tie in together, and what I think you'll see is, I think you're going to see that synergy going in this direction, because if, if everybody focuses on the same items, whether it's taking infrastructure towards economic development, tourism development, sports tourism, uptown, whatever it is, I think you're going to see funding sources going towards that direction. As Anthony already alluded to, you have four or five partners right now that want to get in on the front end, and we haven't even started marketing the other commercial land yet, and that's, that's going to be exciting for us, and that's where, you know, that's where Mr. Carter will come into play in terms of how do we sell land, how do we cost-share in terms of the agreements to do the infrastructure that they'll have access to. Those are some of those unique deals we're going to have to work through or figure out how we do it, but I think, the point there is, the county's working on a plan now that is a very good sign moving forward for how we're going to work together for the next five to 10 years. So, I hope anybody that provides that input, don't forget what we're doing, don't forget what Swansboro's doing, Holly Ridge, you name a partner, everybody's doing something, but the county's working on stuff, too. So, the more we partner with them, the better it's going to be for everybody. It's just like the YMCA, it's just like the Boys and Girls Club, it's like the One Place and the Museum of the Marine. These are all community initiative projects that are going to make us better, however you look at it.
They add value on the community level, but they also add tax value and revenues in other ways, and, you know, the city is in the county, and we generate a ton of tax dollars for the county and provide a lot. The county is served a lot through things within city limits, so the more we can collaborate and cooperate instead of compete with one another in silos, the better we serve all of the citizens, the city and county. So, you know, the more we can get them to the table, the more we can bring ourselves and say we are willing, the better. Just amen.
Yeah, I think it's a good dialogue.
Every kind of sense. It makes financial sense, it makes community sense, it serves the citizens better, makes better use of our resources, we're not spending our money in two ways we can spend it together at one.
You know, one of the things that we didn't focus on a whole lot when we looked at the master plan was the evaluation that Victus did on the return on investment. Now, at the time, I think we were running out of time for the presentation, it was one of the slides and we just kind of sent past it. So, at some point in the future, I think it might be important to bring that back so that you can look and see what the, what the projected impact on not only, you know, the occupancy taxes, but also on sales tax and other things, job generation, income impact, all of that kind of stuff. It's actually very impressive.
Well, and that'll be in the funding plan, if you recall our conversation, the only way to make these numbers happen, where Anthony's talking about facing the construction, is to have multiple funding streams going in. So, you're going to have to look at sales tax generation and dedicating some of those, some of those percentages back towards paying for your capital. You know, tons of people do that, whether they do a percentage of your ad valorem tax or a percentage of your sales tax. That's how you pay for a lot of the CIP projects that Wally was mentioning earlier, is you can pay some of those off quicker on the general fund side if you're dedicating that revenue source, whereas there, you're paying it off based on your structure, your fee structure.
One quick footnote on the county's strategic plan, if you go to their webpage, there's a link there with a survey that you can fill out, put all of your comments in there. I've already done that.
It's one page. I think there's eight or nine questions that we saw. You fill it out, send it back in.
Something to do.
That's right.
Super simple, yep. So, let's talk about timeline. The earliest that we could engage on this is somewhere probably late August, second council meeting in August if we choose to move forward. That being the case, 28 weeks is the timeline that they've established for this. The last scope of work that we had with them, we nailed the timeline pretty well. I think we were two weeks past what they had projected, but, you know, we held the timeline, like I said, pretty well. But what I wanted to show here is that these are not going to be sequential things, these are going to run concurrent, okay? In some cases, you'll have to do things before, and then something, you know, you'll have to lead with certain things, and then you may lag with other things. In this particular case, you're going to have to lead with some survey and TIA work and planning and engineering and some of this schematic design work before you can get to plan unit development. Some of that has to be more clarified, some of it has to be on paper before we can actually start that process. But the bottom line here is, is if we get the green light, this would be the intent. But the bottom line here is, is if we get the green light, this would be the intent. Second meeting in August, we'd like to put this into effect, and then that would put us at 30% designs in February, hopefully January or February, we would talk about moving forward with full designs. Before that, of course, we would have talked about the funding plan, and given you updates on what the programming is and all of that, as well as the management strategy. But if this holds, then that would put us to construction sometime late '25, ideally. It's been a while, but, well, I know, and we appreciate your patience, because it's been a while, but this is actually moving pretty quickly.
Good job, Stan.
We'll ride on that timeline that we laid out originally, if you think about that, so it all depends on, once we get to that 30, the direction, really the direction we have to go in, in terms of, do we focus on this area, or do we focus on everything else? So, that'll be a critical time for when we come back together, but that's, you think about it, that's just around the corner in terms of post-budget retreat, an FY26 retreat, and then we're going to kick off the fiscal year with another meeting, we'll be right around that timeline, and we're going, hey, here you go.
We've got an excellent team of folks who are working on this, several of them are back there observing, hoping, hoping that we can move forward, right? They're the ones that help keep things on track for sure, the subject matter experts. I'm just the one up here as the talking head. Next step, so barring any questions, concerns, additional information that you may need from the presentation tonight, the TDA is going to meet next week, and this will be one of the questions, if we feel good about where we are right now. If not, then we would defer that to another meeting. But again, I would like to get this in front of them sooner rather than later, because they meet every other month, and I would prefer that the TDA not be the holdup. If all that goes well with the TDA, we would request that the council appropriate the funding, do a CIP amendment, and then of course, award the contract to McAdams to move forward with Phase Two.
Sounds like, sounds like we have a good plan going there, so.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any concerns, questions, additional information you may need?
No concerns, looking forward to having opportunities to be part of some of the input on those things.
Okay, excellent. Excellent.
Thank you for your continuous leadership.
There's a lot of folks involved, yep. Thank you for your support. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Anthony. All right, so we're going to now go, need a motion to go into closed session to discuss those two property, some of the property items.